There you go. Everybody ready? North Smithville Town Council, June 7th, 2021. Madam Clerk, we will leave this in the prayer and the pledge, please.
Lord, assist the fine holy spirit of council all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibilities. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rocco, please.
Ms. Al.
Yeah.
Mr. Carvo.
Yeah.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yeah.
Mr. Vagnes.
Here.
Mr. Bureau God.
Here. Open forum, pursuant to our general law forty-two dash forty-six dash six. We are going to have open forum as usual, however, I would ask that anybody who is wants to discuss the budget to say that this is open forum and we're going to have a public hearing of the budget shortly following open forum. So CJ, is there anybody out there that would like to be heard during open forum?
There is nobody who's raising their hands or trying to get my attention.
Is there anybody out there that would like to be heard during open forum, please? Either wave your hand or hit the raise hand icon. Go away.
Nope.
Okay, let's move on now. Presentation of the presentation of budget committees proposed two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two budget. Is the chair of the budget committee on right this time?
Chair Paul.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
First of all, I can thank you and all the members of the committee for their hard work. I know the budget committee is probably one of the most time-consuming committees to serve on, and you guys did a great job and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you very much, and if I may, I will read the presentation of the budget committee.
Yeah, please proceed.
Oh, thank you. The Budget Committee has completed the preparation of the town's fiscal year 2022 budget. The impacts of COVID on the town budget during fiscal year twenty thousand, 2021, were not as severe as forecasted in last year's budget report. So any proposed fiscal year 2022 budget increases are conservative and take into account fiscal year 2021 surplus funds and incoming funds from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Although the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic are ongoing, we anticipate a return to business as usual in fiscal year 2022. The proposed fiscal year 2022 budget reflects a $239,851 or point five one percent increase over the fiscal year 2021 budget. In comparison, the 2021 budget reflected a 1.6 million or 3.69% increase over fiscal year 2020. The following is a reconciliation outlining the significant changes from the 2021 adopted budget as proposed by the Budget Committee. The 2021 adopted budget was forty-six million seven two seven zero six one. The 2022 proposed increases, as summarized, police department plus ninety-four thousand, which is mostly contractual pay increases. The fire department shows an increase of eighty-five thousand, and that is due to service contract increase, rubbish disposal plus twenty-seven thousand, and that's mostly solid waste disposal contract increase. Employee benefits due to rise by thirty-three thousand dollars, and that's an increase in the health insurance premiums. The school department capital budget, $100,000 to go into the revolving account contribution. And then all other proposed increases net was a hundred and seven thousand eight fifty-one. In terms of the proposed decreases from the 2021 adopted budget, we propose that the other post-employment benefits decrease by $50,000. The fund balance restoration decreased by $100,000, and the IT department, which has outsourced some of its services, decreased of $57,000. We come up with a final proposed 2022 budget of forty-six million nine sixty-six nine twelve, which is a, again, a $239,851 increase. The proposed levy increase calculates to 1.11%, although at the time this was written, it's not finalized. And finally, the the school department has or will receive approximately 2.46 million in COVID-19-related assistance from the federal government under three separate programs. With a significant budget surplus for the fiscal year end 2020, together with an anticipated surplus in excess of $1 million for fiscal year end 2021, we believe the school department currently has adequate resources to meet any increase in its financial responsibilities. The Budget Committee is recommending that a maintenance of effort approach be taken for this year's town appropriation. The Budget Committee's proposed budget is approximately $398,000 lower than the town administrator's budget of approximately $47,365,078. The significant difference between the Budget Committee and town administrator budget is attributable to the following. All amounts represent decreases from the administrator's budget. We're recommending the difference between the Budget Committee and town administrator's budget, a reduction in the school appropriation of $310,523. The fund balance restoration, $61,000. The police department, $9,643. Admin, $2,500. And capital of $15,000. If adopted, the proposed budget would result in a modest decrease in the tax rate in fiscal year 2022. Thank you.
That should, that should work.
Okay, how about now, Mr. Jones, to see your line, can you hear it? Paul Jones?
Yeah, I can hear you, John, but I can't see you.
Yeah, the screen's not being shared.
Okay, all right, so anyway, let me repeat what I just said in case you missed it. We do, we are at the point now where we're going to have on the agenda where we have the public here. However, what I'd like to do at this time is continue the public hearing to a date certain being next Monday, the fourteenth. At that time, it gives people time to go over the budget, digest it a little bit, study it a little bit, and then you can come back and make whatever comments or questions that you have. However, if you did come here with the intention of being heard, I'm not going to, you know, be more than welcome to come up before the public hearing at this time. However, so let me make a motion right now, open the public hearing for the budget. That's a motion, wait a second. Wait a second. Rocco, please.
Ms. Al.
Yes.
Mr. Carvo.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnes.
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes. All right, so the public hearing is open, and like I said, next week we will also have a meeting specifically for the public hearing on the budget. Is anybody in CJ up there that has a hand raised?
One second here. DJ, DJ Oger.
Mr. Oger.
Yeah, thanks, thanks everyone. Um, I just had a quick question, and I'll save most of my stuff for next week, but I was just curious if it was possible on the presentation. I know in prior years, there was a, after the summary detail, there was a three-year look back, and it looks like some things may have changed just in the headings with new account numbers. And it's just, I know there's the prior year for this fiscal year 21 out there, but it's, it's kind of hard to follow when you're going back and forth. And if things have changed, it's hard to follow kind of where things may have moved. So I just wasn't sure if it was possible to, to get an update with the three-year look back for each category.
Mr. Davis might be able to answer that question.
I will be posting a breakdown of all expenditures, but unfortunately, we are switching over to a new system with a new child accounts. It's not going to be apples to apples and video on us, so we will be able to see like a true history, but you will have an explanation of every single expenditure that is being proposed.
That'd be perfect.
That will be on the website tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to be heard during the public hearing this time? Mr. Zosaski? I have, first I want to say, offer my compliments to the council. Sir, I don't mean to interrupt you, could you just give us your name and address, Gary Zosaski, 58, thank you. Sorry.
We don't need you.
My compliments to the council and the administrative finance department for the work with the current year budget in dealing with the circumstance that we had come at us last year to be prepared for what could have been an economic tsunami for the school. And I'm proud of what we did as a team to get there. And I'm also proud of what you did to put the money back into those places to sustain your budget. So with that said, you know, I certainly have opinion on almost every line of the budget, but I don't boy with that. I want to speak to three lines. First one is the fund balance contingency line that is proposed here due. And, you know, that is, is not a an easy issue to, to get your head around. But the position that we accomplished over the past few years to establish the fund balance that we have and move it from six percent to fourteen percent was a big reason for our ability last year in the fall when other communities were thinking about having to issue bonds or bans, I guess, bond anticipation bonds, because they were running out of cash. We weren't in that circumstance. We are a well-financed, well-established fiscal entity. I think, and I'm concerned that we, we don't heed that circumstance and understand how we save it. It's very easy to look at that and say, ah, we don't need to put anything in this year. Well, I need to do. And much of it comes down to a circumstance of how do you calculate? If you go by the way that Moody's calculates fund balance percentage, I think you'll find that we need something on the order of twenty to twenty-five percent. Because what they do is exclude multiple lights in their evaluation of fund balance. Our ordinance doesn't do that. Even our auditors will calculate the fund balance differently from the way that our ordinance processes for the community to calculate. And then, but even that is complicated or confusing. Simple math, but what numbers do you use? My advocacy to maintain a strong position is to keep this very simple. Fund balance needs to be, or is targeted based on the government officials in the city government, we won't put that association in. That we, we chose to follow when we adopted the ordinance, rapidly adopted the ordinance. Essentially says that we need to have two months of our expenses on the end as fund balance. Not just cash on the end, but as dedicated fund balance. So my advocacy in the way that we should be calculating that is to take a future budget, which in this case, the budget committee's recommendation, even that recommendation, divide the total by twelve, multiply it by two. All right. What you get is fund balance, it should be something on the order of $7,827,818. That becomes the strong end of our fourteen to sixteen percent number in the ordinance. I've never had any hesitation to say that I feel comfortable at fourteen. I don't, we don't need to go beyond sixteen. That is just no need. Sixteen is, is false, one-sixth of the budget that's added. That is what we should be doing when we're targeting these numbers that we put in budget is to keep that number in mind to compare that this book, whatever budget is adopted, divided by two, excuse me, divided by twelve, multiply by two, that's the number that we should be targeting for our, or comparing to with our fund balance. So the fund balance restoration line is, it was also indicated to be contingency. And, you know, I firmly believe that the, the town does need that. But I think it was important to link the two, because when you put something in as a contingency, it just looks like it's free money hanging out there. Well, this isn't free money hanging out there. When you take from that contingency, you've earned the fund balance. Because as you, as the budget rises, you have it added, then you're falling behind, even if you were at fourteen strong, fourteen percent or higher on our simple math basis for evaluating, not the orders, our simple math. The circumstance is such that you're going down. And so I offer that to you as a, as an explanation, not going to tell you what the, the number should be. I do think that reduction by a hundred thousand dollars is a mistake, because certainly as the budget increases, we're going to need to increase the fund balance. That's the way it works. The, the second item that I wanted to address was OPEB. And again, it's easy to say, I will pay that later. And the recommendation is that we reduce the OPEB contribution by $50,000. What we have is a $6 million current OPEB obligation unfunded, well, excuse me, eighty percent of it, thereabouts unfunded. We need that number to be closer to eighty percent to be respectable in our obligation as a community to the employees of the town and ourselves as citizens, needing our obligation. The, there is no need to fix it in one year, but what we were working towards was a plan to fix it over twenty years. And the idea was to build it by $50,000 per year until we got to $300,000, again, simple math, six million divided by 300,000, twenty years, you're there. Now, are there intervening issues that could cause it to go upward down? Yes. And almost anyone forecasts healthcare is going to get more expensive. Will we be able to negotiate lower cost plans? Maybe, we've tried, we've done some of that. I think our plans are actually pretty competitive at present, and our contributions from employees are, are, are either there or getting there. And so, you know, it's a, it's a moving target, so that's yes. But there needs to be a plan for how we're going to meet that target in the final analysis. Taking money from the annual contribution is not following a plan, it's falling off a plan. So I encourage, you know, I think this would be the year that the plan that we were trying to follow would have the the OPEB contribution get to $300,000. And I encourage that we look at how we're doing this, reducing is a mistake, we should be adding. Maybe we don't get to 300 this year, but we shouldn't be falling backwards. Finally, the other item that is, is a, I think, very important, it's not just me, but the entire town, is the road resurfacing and reconstruction budget. The budget that we had last year was $600,000, and, you know, it was painful to me to recommend that $200,000 to go into the contingency.
It was about one little bit, that.
I wasn't really happy making that recommendation, because, you know, when I started as the administrator, we had a report that said how many miles of roads in town were deficient. They're all catalyzed, pretty simple and easy thing to follow. What we didn't have was a plan for how we were going to get them done. Again, this wasn't high-level engineering or math, it was simple, simple math. We said, how much can we do in a year? And what do we need to do in a year? We have sixty miles of roads in town, thereabouts maybe sixty-six miles, but that's simple, sixty. And if we want to keep the average age of the roads less than thirty years, which if you look at some of them, take a look at Winchester or Remington Circle, which I think were in that thirty to forty-year range. They are, they're done. They were done probably five years ago. Thirty years is not a bad target to try to hit. So sixty miles, thirty years, through the map, we need to do two miles a year. Road reconstruction, we've seen through the $7 million, the $2.8 million bond, that's seven miles. And our recent work that, you know, with the, that, you know, $400,000 a mile is reasonable budget at this time. So getting to $800,000 a year was the plan that we recommended, and councils were following as best they possibly could. And so, you know, we were at, the recommendation was to increase it by a hundred thousand dollars per year to get to that hundred thousand dollars and to make sure that we got two miles done every year. We have some money from last year. We actually didn't go out to bid last year for a specific paving project, because we didn't know what we were going to have to spend. We weren't certain that, well, until the, the budget was passed, we didn't know what it was going to be. And then when, you know, everything came down as it did, and we pulled money out of it, we had less than we did, than we needed. We also had the waterline reconstruction out on Mechanics Street and Overlake Road that required repaving. We did do some paving last year, we didn't do as much as we should have. It's not to anybody's discredence, or it's not a criticism, it's a simple reality that we couldn't get the map together, or we couldn't be certain about what we're going to have to be able to go out and put it out to bid with, with some clarity and interest to bidders. So, you know, there's money there, that, the fact that there is money there shouldn't be a reason for us to reduce the contribution that we make to that line item. That's going backwards again. We need to go forward. We've got, look at the length of roadway that needs to be done just on, on two major roads, on Little Road and Wood Sockel. Throw in, as I did a couple minutes ago, on Remington Circle and Winchester or Open Drive, Circle Drive and Bruce Drive and the other one is High Point Drive. And tell me that we don't need to do something above each of those roadways. They're all on the reports, but, you know, this isn't a convenience that we're looking at. This is a critical issue to our residents, that we get our roadways, just like the national circumstance, that we get our infrastructure into a circumstance that we can be respectful of. And we haven't gotten there yet. That, you know, part of that is me, I'm, you know, not ashamed to say that. I think we, we put a plan in place, we said, let's get to two miles a year. And to do that, we need $800,000 a year in the budget every year without the fader. And I think that we as a community can afford to do that. In many ways, we can't afford not to do that. So I just encourage you in those three items to go carefully, give ample consideration to, appropriate consideration to fund balance, to our OPEB obligations, and to our road re- uh, to our OPEP obligations and to our road reconstruction obligations. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to be heard?
Christine Welch.
Oh, sorry?
Christine Welch.
Hi, this was, um, hi, how are you? I'm just one of the teachers that I, I was just wondering if, I, I don't think you can fix this tonight, but it's really hard to hear at home for the people that are speaking in the room. I didn't know if there was any way we could address that. It's really difficult to hear the speakers.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Oh, CJ, I can't hear her right now.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, can you hear me okay?
That's, the people at the table, it seems to be a little bit better than when someone's at the podium.
Okay.
It's hard to hear.
All right, thank you. Yeah, please. Is there anybody else? Now, keep in mind, folks, uh, what we're looking to do is, I know there's a lot of people on tonight, but we're looking, uh, to actually have the public hearing for, uh, on the budget, that everybody that wants to be heard will be heard. We're looking to do that next Monday night. However, if there's somebody that didn't want to be, uh, that doesn't want to be heard tonight, you know, you're more than welcome since it was on the agenda. So CJ, is there anybody out there right now that wants to be heard? Anybody waving their hand?
Uh, let me just go through, I have a couple of pages I have to go through, so. Yeah, Mrs. O'Brien? She sees a unmuted person.
Um, hello there, everybody, and thank you for, you know, um, acknowledging and accepting community responses. Um, I hadn't prepared to speak, but I would just like to say that, um, I obviously support full funding, um, for the schools. I am a teacher and a taxpayer and have two students in the school system and they are doing amazingly well and they have phenomenal teachers and I honestly can't say enough about North Smithfield, um, and our public schools. But I, I was a little concerned when I had heard from some people that a reason to maybe give less to the schools was that we were, that we were receiving extra federal funding, you know, COVID dollars. And I feel like that is to enhance and grow our students because times have been so difficult and to try to acclimate them back um, to the normal school environment that we're hoping will occur, right, in September. Um, but I, I just don't want that to be a reason why we don't fund our schools the way we would do so. It's great that we can provide extra opportunities and make sure that their social and emotional welfare is done, you know, um, that we care for them and help them, but I, I just, uh, I had some concerns about the funding from the budget committee, so as a member of the North Smithfield community, I just kind of wanted to make that known, so thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Uh, there's a gentleman identified as Mark. I don't have a last name, just Mark.
Uh, Mark, I wouldn't have a last name, but we see your hand raised.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's Mark LaBlossier, thirty Winchester Avenue. Um, I, I just want to reiterate a lot of what Natalie just said, as well as a lot of what Gary just said. Um, in terms of, we shouldn't be going backwards, we shouldn't be taking a year to, to, to go backwards in funding. Um, and I, I too have two children that are receiving services from the school system and I am also a teacher, full disclosure. Um, but I am also a taxpayer and I truly believe my wholeheartedly that the, the main reason, or one of the major reasons why our, uh, like, town is so great is because of our school.
All right, did he get to the end?
I think he got cut off.
Just have been going up.
No, Mark, you got cut off, but you did, the last thing we heard was you said the reason the town is so great was because of the schools that you.
So I, I was trying to say that the reason why the, the school system, I'm sorry, the reason that, that, that the funding of the school is so important is because the property values of the system, I'm sorry, the property values have been going up as the school system is going down. And my computer is freaking out right now, so I apologize for, for all of that, it's like flashing at me and stuff. Um, but the long and short of it is, is I just worry that if we level fund the schools because of, like Natalie said, the, the COVID dollars might be coming in from the, the, the federal programs. Um, that would be a mistake, um, and, and, and the federal programs have said so. They say that those funds are not to bo, not to be used to supplant the budget, but it's a supplement to the budget. Um, so I just, th- those are, those are my main thoughts. And again, I apologize for technical issues or for glitching out.
Thank you. Thank you. CJ, anybody else?
Uh, we just want to make another call, there's no, uh, no.
Is anybody else out there that would like to be heard?
No.
Okay, we're going through the pages, but, uh, if we missed anybody, just unmute yourself and, uh, just speak up and, uh, we'll, we'll let you be here to say what you got to say.
Let me go through the pages one more time.
Yeah, go through it one more time, I don't want to miss anybody.
Here we have fifty-six people out in the room tonight, so. I don't see anyone else, Mr. President.
All right, so, uh, others, we have, we have a lot of people on tonight, so I hope that, uh, the folks, uh, come back next week and log on next week or come here live next week and then we'll, we'll, uh, continue the public hearing. So if there's nobody else that, um, wants to be heard, I will make a motion to continue the public hearing here and to a date certain being next Monday, the fourteenth. To continue the public hearing, that's the motion.
A second for discussion.
We have a second for discussion.
Just, uh, under discussion, um, complete agreement. This is the first chance we can get, so yeah, we'll give them a week to look at this thing and get a comment and come back and, and read this with us. The discussion part I wanted to have is, as a council, we're going to have to continue the public hearing for the fourteenth. And it would be my recommendation that we don't set the budget till the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth of June. We take those two dates separate from, from our regular council meeting, just to do the budget and re, and reschedule for two nights just in case the discussion goes on longer than one night. You don't want to be here at one o'clock in the morning deciding the budget. It's, it's worked well in the past where one year we needed it, one year we didn't need it.
Yeah.
You know, but it, to, to stick it into a council meeting.
I agree.
It should be, it should be a standard meeting where we discuss what we're going to do with the budget moving forward. We've done, you know, we take all the public input and then that might, the input is, is amongst the five of us, the finance director.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, just, uh, so the public can understand what, what we want to do here. So next week, we're going to have the public hearing. Uh, the following week would be a regular council meeting. And then the week after that.
June twenty-eighth, June twenty-ninth, schedule both days.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
I think that worked well in the past while we did that.
Yeah, and so it's been closed, the public hearing on those two days.
Right.
Not reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, so it's imperative that if you want to be heard, then next week is the time that, uh, that, you know, that you come to the meeting and you speak up. Okay, I'll give one last, oh no, we already closed it, right, so, uh, we already moved on, so, uh.
I think, Mr. President, any motion?
Okay, there is. I think we have a second. Yep, just about to give a second, is there any further discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mrs. Badne?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes, all right, thank you, everybody. Moving on, uh, to old business. Discussion by council about other action, an update on the municipal building review task force. Uh, Mr. Sinatra, I saw you're on.
Yes, I am, good evening. Um, the task force met with, um, the town's architect, Tecton, on the twenty-seventh of May. Um, as required by the contract, they've been looking at a new police station versus rehabilitation expansion of the current station on the existing site. Um, they've determined that both options can fit. Um, but there are some, um, concerns because the site is really constricted. Um, they will be working on cost estimates over the next month. And they are still on track to finish, um, in late July. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody have any questions, Mr. Sinatra? Thank you. Uh, moving on now to discussion by council about other action, an update of the Hallwell Review Committee. Mr. Carvo, you have an update for us today?
I, I do, we actually got a meeting, uh, last Thursday, uh, we actually got a lot that we went over. Um, well, five points, so I'll just take a few minutes to go over, go over the information. So the first thing, uh, that we went over was, um, some conditions at Hallwell in regards to the indoor air quality test, uh, class one survey. So we discussed about, uh, assessing what the rough cost would be to conduct an air quality test, uh, as well as a class one survey. Uh, we did schedule a walkthrough, uh, open to the public this coming Saturday, June twelfth, at nine AM. Again, it's open to town residents, uh, committee members walk the property with, uh, rain, undergust. Uh, we also talked about the, in regards to Weston and Sampson. Uh, we have selected or set up the Hallwell Review Committee meetings with Weston and Sampson. Now, we have three dates, three dates set so far. Uh, one of them for June seventeenth, another one for July fifteenth, another one for August twenty-first, and then to be determined, one last one in September. The town council, uh, we need to start thinking about integrating our meetings, uh, so that we can relay that and get on the Weston and Sampson calendar. Uh, and again, we have four meetings, um, set for us. The community garden, just a little update on that. Uh, Saturday, May twenty-ninth, uh, we recognized, uh, at last week's Hallwell Review Committee meeting, uh, that fifteen volunteers from the community gave their time to setting up the garden, which was very impressive. As a, as a committee, uh, we took time to call out each one of the volunteers and recognizing them for their volunteer service. We created and rolled out a survey, this is the fourth point. Uh, we created and rolled out a survey open to the public that was released on Monday, May twenty-fourth, asking four simple questions. One, what would you like the town, uh, would you like the town to keep or sell the property? Two, what would you like to see at the Hallwell property? Three, what would you, what would you not like to see at the Hallwell property? And four, asking them to provide their addresses. As of today, uh, around six o'clock or so, uh, we've had two hundred and ninety-six respondents throughout the town. Uh, the committee will have, will provide our final results of the survey by the beginning or middle of July, as it ends at the end of this month. From the results we've compiled so far, it is well diverse selection of residents throughout the town, not focusing on one condensed region. And then our last, it was brought up, uh, to reach out to the high school at the beginning of the new school year to possibly have a student recommended that shows an interest in engineering or town recreation slash planning to attend the Hallwell Review Committee meetings. That's all I have, any questions?
I do, uh, could you possibly, uh, we have a lot of people on tonight, could you, uh, advise people how they can, uh, get, uh, the question in and participate in that?
So, uh, in regards to the question here, uh, I just want to work, uh, there's several ways that you can, uh, access that. Uh, if you, um, well, one, if you go on my Facebook page, uh, you, you'll be able to access the survey. Uh, I know that, uh, we're going to be reaching it out, reaching out to several committees within the town. Um, providing it that way, we're also going to be, or have been, including it in the, the town newsletter. Uh, it was also put out in several news articles, uh, NRI Now, as well as the Valley Breeze, uh, both online as well as, uh, in the paper. And we're also looking to come up with ways that we can make sure that, uh, older residents in town that may not necessarily be, uh, computer savvy, uh, to be able to, uh, either donate part-time or find other ways to take it, sort of, the, uh, the survey manually. Uh, and then the last part, we were in the process of getting these surveys sent out to the students as well throughout the town. This, this president, my name, a follow-up on Councilman Carbo. It is on the town, it's in the newsletter, it's on the list, you can go. I received a text this evening, uh, just before the meeting started, from, uh, Administrator Devo, who, uh, is probably going to have the citizen, excuse me, the senior committee distribute, uh, distribute those surveys, paper copies, so that folks that may not have access will feel more comfortable using papers, so that's going to get out to them as well.
Anybody else have any questions, uh, regarding the Hallwell Committee? Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, section seven, North Smithfield Town Council seeking support of license commissions. Discussion by council about other action on holiday license, phantom fireworks, eight eighty-six, eighty-dollar highway. If you're looking to pack it, the location, the, uh, the license is right over here.
Exactly where, um, of course, it's, it's, it's blocked or there will be some.
Uh, he's, that's, I think that's the location right out, right by the pool, uh, the pool place right over there. Yeah, it's in that pool place, it's right next side, next side, yeah. They, they set up their, uh, the, yes.
It's just with the traffic going in and out, you know, I'm, we turned, uh, the, uh, it's that late side.
It's, it's, it's been there for, it's been there for many years now.
But the tra, traffic we have had is getting, it's been really bad. I don't know, we just tried getting out of a fast food, but that place, but there's times when you have to go down the road, go through that and go the other way. It's bad. But, you know, you may ask the police for basing, but I, I think some places, places happen.
Anyone have anything else to add to that?
Madam Clerk, I just wanted to make sure that everything came back fine, that's nothing outstanding on that presentation. Okay.
All the approvals are on the back page.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I made a motion to be approved, a holiday license for phantom fireworks at eight eighty-six, eighty-dollar highway, based on the sign-off by the tax collector, the billiard official, and by a commission.
We have a motion in a second, if President's standing.
Which one is it, one more of these?
Oh, that's true.
You, they're usually out by now.
Yeah.
Two more.
This is more than one.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Biragod, I mean, Mr. Badne, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Biragod.
Yes.
Clerk will contact, uh, the North Smithfield. Uh, new business, uh, discussion by council about other action on post amendment and court ordinances. Section six, that six dash four, purchasing and competitive bid procedure. Uh, this is the first reading. Um, Mr. Zolinski, can you go ahead and just give us a little background on this? It's definitely.
I'm trying to do this.
Put the dial a little bit.
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Okay. Uh, basically, this comes about because we were trying to facilitate the installation of internet access at the end of control, et cetera. Uh, so, and it was very difficult. Number of ways to do it was to trench through the parking lot, or lawyers about, uh, they.
Number of ways to do it was to trench through parking lot, or lawyers above, they got very, very expensive. And so, in essence, to do this, I, I think that with today's, I mean, what can one purchase for $4,000 in this town? Pretty much nothing. If, if you needed, I mean, I know some of this is emergency purchasing, but if you had it far over the blue line of traffic, those aren't something you all get cheaply, so. Those are emergencies, totally different. I think with pricing on today, if you look at the price of construction costs, sheets of plywood are over $80 a sheet. You just can't do a thing today. So I, I asked Solicitor Delos to take a look at this, to go from $1,000 to $5,000. And I will show you that should I go, go through the purchasing process, it will be on the council agenda. So you can all view it, so, af- after the fact, because sometimes these things expedite when you have to do that. But anything like that, we need to print it. Just want to go out and get it, if I just stop a little bit, and we move off the bids, we're, we're, it's agreeable. But we also have, I have a question, and I may direct this to Solicitor Delos. Just so you can see it. Free firm bids, what, what happens when we go off a bid? We're lucky we can get one or two bids at times. It's very difficult to get a bid. So I may ask that if Solicitor Delos is, oh, sorry, David, I tried to call you today, but I just tied up. I didn't mean to just pop aside right now, but getting three bids is extremely difficult. It's not, we do, sometimes you're not going to, you're not going to get three people. I mean, we, we had cases on this project doing the town hall, where we're going to get one person because they're doing the work already, and it's like a chain order, and you're not going to get someone different to come in. And, and yeah, the $1,000 tied in hands, and, and, you know, and it's, it's a matter of updating it. I, I agree the ordinance needs to be updated, but in, in the bigger picture, just from, from doing the charter a few years ago, we have a policy in town, purchasing policy, we have an ordinance, we have the charter, and we have state law, and not one of them lines up with the other. People look at all four pieces of this so they line up. It's, it's really, it's really messy in some places. We can click with state law in some places, which, in the ordinance, we can do that, but in our policies and in the charter, we even have a power of the state law. And it's, it's really, it's really kind of messy, because it's been changed and adopted in different ways at different times. And so, so this is the first step I, you know, I support making the change, because it's just, we need to move forward, nothing costs $1,000 anymore. You've lived it, and some people live this, they're, they're saying, why you change it? Well, it's, it's we just, we just need to update, because it's, it's, it's so difficult for when you have to spend advertising to go out and purchase stuff, if you have to follow the advertising laws. You're spending four, five, six, $700 to advertise something for $1,000. It's, it doesn't make sense. I kind of, Solicitor Delos wants to leave, add his legal opinion, or he's not a great job reviewing it for us.
Mr. President, members of the council, um, is that going to work? Mr. President, members of the council, I'm looking at the provision that the town administrator has highlighted. It appears he wants to further amend the ordinance to secu- to no longer be required to secure three firm quotations from qualified vendors. So basically, he's looking for full discretion up to $5,000. So that would be a further amendment that you would take up at the, between now, I'm not going to try to amend this now, but obviously at the next meeting, second, second reading, you would be considering the discretion up to 5,000, which is consistent with state law, by the way. And also, full discretion, not requiring the need for securing three firm quotations, which is eliminating another limitation on the discretion of the finance director. So I, obviously, I will make that change. And the council will have to vote to amend the ordinance, to add that change, and then directly pass it as amendment, so it'd be another amendment to this proposed amendment, I guess. We won't do that tonight, but I guess the understanding, if the council want me to go in that direction and support the administrator, I certainly will do so.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it takes to be able to move forward with this. It is a little silly that it's $1,000 in this day and age, so.
I certainly support the fact that we should be allowing the discretion up to the state law. Pretty much every city in town does that now. When you set this $1,000 limit, I'm sure it was many years ago. We said the ordinance has the date on it, looks like it was 1973 adopted and amended in 1996. So you're still talking 96, you're still talking almost 30 years ago.
And, and, and that's what, that's what I was talking about, is the town has adopted policies that have changed that amount, but not the ordinance. And so, so the finance director will look at it and say, well, we have a policy that says this, and someone came from back and said, yeah, we've got an ordinance that says this, and the state law says this. We, we were trying to, we, as a charter commission, we tried to correct that by just saying, for competitive purchasing, we're going to follow state law as amended, at a certain date, and, and everything would have just piggybacked into that. And then we just had to update our ordinance, the policies and all that other stuff, which is going away. Because the ordinance override the state law. If it's, if it's more restrictive, it can override, so by having that $1,000, it overrides the state law, it's, it's 5,000.
Right.
And so you, you've got to keep your ordinances in line with state law, unless you don't want it to in the charter.
I made that recommendation to the charter commission, I still make that recommendation now.
Okay, so no vote at this time?
No, this is first reading.
We have to take a motion for first reading.
Can I just ask a question, just a clarification? So it's for purchases up to 5,000, so 5,001 is when you need to get, so 4,999 dollars and cents that goes here, or is it 5,000?
5,000. Actually, if you were to follow state law, and, and we didn't get caught up in this, in this ordinance, state law said $5,000 as adjusted by CPI. So technically speaking, you, you can actually purchase, most cities in town can purchase, I think we give them at like $6,000 or $7,000 without going to bid, because it's subject to CPI. If anything, you know, I didn't know if you want to get, we just wanted to start adding a calculation to the clock of CPI. I just figured, make it 5,000, because that's what state law started with, when they adopted it 14 years ago. I think it was approximately 14 or 15 years ago when we, we did, I looked at that, that state law. So the answer is 5,001, you're going to go to competitive bidding, or sole source, or state, state master price agreement, or urgency, urgency method. So there are a couple of ways to purchase without going to competitive bidding, but under state law, you, state law is driving that, that ceiling, if you will, of amount, not, not the town ordinance. State law indicates 5,000 plus CPI, and you're saying 5,000.
Any questions? Anybody else have any questions?
So.
Yeah, just wondering, just on what what Kim was stating, maybe the wording should be changed to 6 dash, 6 dash 1, because it does seem a little ambiguous where it says less than 5,000, but in all the other spots it says, for example, 6 dash 2, of which value is 5,000 or more. Number 5, not in excess of 5,000. So it just seems like it's more concrete here around 6 dash 1, that says less than 5,000. So maybe it should be equal to, or?
Should say not to exceed.
Okay.
So maybe we'll also propose that everywhere you see that $5,000 ceiling, they'll say not to exceed, which is very similar to what the state law says, not to exceed $5,000 plus CPI, as the state law says.
But these are all different, different things too, some of them purchasing, some of them forwarding contracts. So it references different things, and that's why it's referenced different ways, I might believe.
But I think if you could be consistent, say not to exceed 5,000, if that's what you want, be consistent across the board, I can make that change as well.
Yeah, just looking at what I, I think was saying, you know, there's things that aren't matching up, and I would just, I wouldn't want this to be a holdup in, you know, years to come. Anybody else?
Prime Minister, Councils, the, the language of CPI, I think would be beneficial for
Yeah, I have no objection to that, but I think that's a good idea.
So under your council's approval in my direction, let Solicitor Delos put the proper verbiage in there to reflect CPI.
So technically speaking, in 1996, if they had CPI, then we would have done this, right?
Pretty close.
Right.
Pretty close. I don't know, CPI would have been $5,000, I think we So what we'll do is we'll adopt the state language of CPI. The number starts at 5, and those from there. Right. As of. As of, right. I mean, in reality, it is.
Yeah, that's still going to be lower.
Over 15 years, it could make a bigger difference. In one or two years ago, when the CPI is at 1.3%, it's not going to make this huge jump that we can, or all of a sudden, we can, we can bypass it. Just give it a way through something. It's just something to put there, so you don't have to keep revisiting this thing. Every two years or three years, things change. I mean, right now, you're facing, what the administrator said, you're facing extended cost, things that are going up, they're rising so fast right now in construction. And this is, what this really addresses a lot, construction stuff.
Yeah, and it's going to make the administrator's job a little easier, right?
We still have the finance department, we have the eyes out, your eyes will be out.
Right. Okay. So do we even approve the first reading, or?
You, you can, you don't need to approve the first reading, Mr. President. It moves to be, the only time the ordinance gets approved is once.
Okay, just taking a shot.
But I'm taking notes with all the comments during this reading, and I'll provide a, a second document. And if the council adopts that second document, amending this at the second reading, they can adopt it, adopt it, and move on. And because it's not a, this does not require a public hearing, unless you get a petition by 20 residents in the next few days, although you have no public hearing.
That's not zoning, that's not a zoning ordinance, I think that's our space, public hearing.
Right. So that's why there's no public hearing in between.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Discussion by council about other action and payment of invoices. Mr. Jesus, you want to take us through this? Slide number one.
P. D. Act, we want this one, this is the department, they were also approved by the school budget, school committee. The first invoice, and the OPB from the revolving account. The first invoice is from STV. It's for work done February 27th through April 2nd, for a total of $570. Invoice number 90020589, dated April 28th, 2021.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Discussion. Rocco, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biaragod?
Yes.
Next invoice is in from Gilvee, invoice number J08240.000-13. It doesn't say not yet, but it, it is for the North Springfield Elementary School, the ventilation, I mean, GCI control system. The total due is $17,679, and that's also coming from the school revolving account.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Discussion. Rocco?
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biaragod?
Yes.
Next invoice is from Steven Turner, invoice number 3575, dated March 31st, 2021. It's $1,257, and also this is coming from the school revolving account.
Motion to approve? Discussion? Rocco?
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biaragod?
Yes.
The final three invoices is getting reimbursed by SBA COVID-19 capital grade from the Department of Education. And that follows, the first invoice is from the innocent class company, also known as CGNM, invoice number 8240, 428, 2021, for a total of $22,500.
Motion to approve?
Second, second. Second, discussion, yeah, just on the discussion, just, you need to note that once we approve this, it goes to Beaver Island Department of Ed, the school building authority, if they're open as well, before the money is, is paid back for.
Thank you. Leave none? Rocco, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biaragod?
Yes.
Next invoice is also being reimbursed by the Department of Ed. Education is a asbestos abatement company, invoice number 2021-102, dated April 22nd, 2021. For a total of $6,068 and 64 cents.
So moved. Okay, we have motion and second. Any discussion on this one? Rocco?
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biaragod?
Yes.
The last one?
The last one is also being reimbursed by the Department of Education. It's from Emory Environmental Associates, invoice number EE821-050, dated July 27th, 2020, for an amount of $675.
Thank you. Motion to approve? So, in a second, discussion. Rocco?
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biaragod?
Yes.
Is Mrs. St. George with us, or you doing the event?
She, she should be on the line.
Hi, I'm here. Good evening.
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, so I'm presenting abatements for real estate, motor vehicle, and personal tangible property in the amount of $12,657.86.
Any, anybody have any questions? Let's see, George?
Yeah, why would, why would we have five years of billing to a business that went out of business? Why would not, why would that not have been kept up?
Um, so it looks like on the folder, there was a note that that business went out in 2014. So his last billing year would have been 2015. I'm not sure why it went on, on, unremoved from the tangible tax rule. I'm not sure why. I just caught it now. It should have been a ba-, it should have been removed in 15.
Anyone else have any questions on these payments?
I'm just, I'm just wondering why we're bidding that. I get it, the business, they went out of business, but they owed us for what they had for tangibles. If they, if they didn't sell off their assets, they still have tangible, just because of business code, they didn't.
They did sell their assets. He had nothing in that business.
Then she, that they did sell the assets, that there was nothing left in the business.
So his final year of taxes were 2015, well, tax bill of 2015, because they're a year behind.
So nobody said it took him five years? I mean.
They probably received the bill, but just to, to be bothered them to what they were over. Jen?
Yes.
Was that was told by the collection agency or was this one that just came forward on the old?
Um he received a letter from the collection agency. And then when we looked into it, he had, there was a note from the prior, two prior assessors saying that they went out of business in fourteen.
So bill shouldn't have been generated after that.
Thank you.
Do we know how how much what the value is that we've sent out to collections? Is that possible coming back?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I can send you all an email. We will receive it quite a bit.
Because it sounds every meeting we're getting abatements, I'm just wondering how much was out there that would kind of keep coming back.
It actually, my part of it has slowed down apart with all the old motor vehicles. Now it's the businesses. But Jen, do you have any pending for the next meeting?
No.
Yeah, they're slowing down, and I also, next meeting, I'm gonna have a lot um unfortunately deceased um people. Taxpayers for motor vehicles, I have about ten that we found out about that I will be presenting for the next meeting.
How many years ago is that?
Not many years back. So one of them actually, I was looking at one of them was in two thousand and nine, and I was wondering why um the car was registered two years after. Somebody must have been driving it. I can't prove it. We got that next, next meeting. But it is long enough.
Anybody else have any more questions on this page of the papers?
Mr. President?
Miss Alves?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a abatement that's requested by the tax assessor in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty seven dollars and six cents.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second. Any further discussion or questions? Rocco, please.
Miss Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes. Okay, next page.
Jen, Jen's muted. She's muted. Oh, she's done? Okay.
Oh, we have another page.
I think that's just the background.
Hello, just back, oh, I'm sorry.
It's just the background.
I get you, okay. Okay, so we're good there. Thank you. Yeah, it's mine. Cuz last time I went.
They did some supplemental, this one there.
Last time I skipped the page. And you stopped me. I went to the page, yeah, okay.
It's nice to have this opportunity.
I know.
A discussion by council, vote on other action on extension of trash and recycling contract, MTG disposal. Mr. Pendergast, are you out there?
I am. Good evening, uh counsel. The administration and MTG disposal have negotiated and agreed to a one-year extension on the uh original contract. It reflects a one point nine um increase for the uh the pickup of trash and recycling and yard waste. The increase is about twelve thousand, twenty foot dollars.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Pendergast?
Sir, I have a quick question or more comment. I do, I notice. So we're not changing anything as far as the uh trash pickup. We're not going to bend to, there's no plan to go into the uh, you know, the bins or anything like that, correct?
Correct, that, yeah, we we've discussed automation in the past, but it's it's quite costly, the startup cost. So uh. I I I, we have four year options here. Um that's something that we may next year go out to bid and bid it both ways. Uh curbside pickup as we do now in automation.
Well, I think we're, as a town, I think we're very lucky that, I mean, we could just, you can break anything up here straight. As much of, and it it's going the next day, look, man, you know, there's so much, you're so much better than having in your, the bins like they're doing some of the neighborhood weirdness. You know, so I think we're very lucky in that respect. I hate to see us lose that.
Yeah, so far, I mean, um a- at my state meetings, everyone who has the automation program, for the most part, is experiencing um a lot of contamination fines through Rhode Island Resource Recovery because no one can see inside the barrel until it's already emptied at the landfill. Whereas our people are picking it up curbside, they can see if there's a contaminated or an an item that should not be in the recyclable uh recyclable bin. So there's pros and cons to both, but uh right now, I think it's working for us. They've been hit by the COVID this past year. It's been a very trying time for them with personnel, but we're working through it, and uh I think things are working out. So we'll give them one more year and we'll see what happens, and then uh maybe we'll just rebid it and see what, you know, see what the numbers come in at.
Thank you.
We need to vote. I make a motion that we we extend the contract with MTG disposal for solid waste, recyclable yard waste collection. Services for one year, the contract will run from July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty two with an adjustment of one point nine percent. Totalling six thousand, forty four dollars, six hundred and forty four thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars. And the haul rate will increase by three point one two percent, hundred and sixty five dollars per.
Uh thank you. That's a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Rocco, please.
Miss Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Carver?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion by council, vote on other action and recommendation from sewer commission to approve payment to Wright Pierce. For update of town's facilities, clean bill, Dory, Sewer Commission Chairman. I'm sorry, as a Sewer Commission Chairman, uh.
He's he's on.
I am on. So so basically, what you have before you is a proposal prepared by Wright Pierce to review and potentially amend the town's wastewater facilities plan. Uh this came up uh because during the Slater Village Silver Pines development, um the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Protection, the D uh D E M got involved because of the flow rates. Uh they reviewed the current uh wastewater management facilities plan for the municipality. And um they did basically some very simple calculations. Uh the proposed development right now would put out two hundred and twenty four thousand, eight hundred and twenty uh gallons per day. Um with the uh the the current usage um being added in. Uh the Belcher pump have station that handles this concurrently handle two hundred and thirty eight thousand gallons per day. So the development would be within the uh limits of the uh Belcher app station. The concern uh came because the town has also planned an additional sixty seven thousand, seventy thousand gallons per day and future development to be added to the Belcher station already. And that means that based on the numbers in the current uh plan, uh there would be a deficiency of fifty four thousand, seven hundred uh uh gallons per day, and the D E M was concerned about this, rightfully so. So what we uh engaged Wright Pierce or discussed with Wright Pierce was the potential for them to come in and and do a few things for us. Uh the first thing we wanted to do was uh review the calculations provided by the developer's engineer to make sure that the numbers that they're talking about putting into our uh sewer system is actually correct. Uh then we would review the current uh W F P to make sure that uh that the the numbers inside the current W F P were also correct. I don't believe it's been updated since two thousand and seven. Um we would then verify the capacity of the Belcher app pump station based on town records, but we also plan on performing a drawdown test uh with the assistance of the uh town sewer superintendent uh before we amend the entire plan. We just wanna make sure that that our numbers in the plan are actually correct and that the Belcher uh app station is performing at the correct capacity. Um fourth, uh we asked Wright Pierce to evaluate the downstream collection system's ability to accommodate all this additional flow. And to ca calculate potential future flow rates for the Victory Highway area. Uh we wanna make sure that when we do this, it's a, it's a one time, well, not a one time thing, but we update the plan as uh comprehensively as possible with the most accurate numbers. Once uh Wright Pierce does all that, um we'd ask him to identify any improvements to the town's collection system to accommodate Slade, uh Slater Village and Silver Pines and revise the W F P accordingly. Uh once they revise the tables and the sections, revise the mapping, uh they'd also attend any public hearings with the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and and this body uh to put forth uh any amendments to the plan that they have. Uh the estimated cost for this is sixteen thousand, uh six hundred and ninety dollars. Uh currently in our budget, uh line item for this type of work, uh we have uh forty seven thousand, five hundred dollars uh available to spend. Uh there was a lot of discussion uh in the Sewer Commission about this, and we ultimately decided that uh this is a cost that should be paid for by the town because it would be a comprehensive update of our plan. Uh even though what kind of initiated the need for the review was the development, uh this is our plan, and uh we wanna be uh the ones kind of leading the way on this. Uh pending any questions, uh that's all I have.
Is there many, many questions for the store?
The reason that we're having this review for this plan, wastewater facility is because of this development, the nine silver pines, right? It's nothing, it's not our doing. This is, this is something that D E M is weighing in on because someone else wants to build something and not that. And my concern is, we need to have a plan on to make sure that we meet this, that this is not our responsibility, capable of handling this, based on the way I'm reading this. You wanna put this development in, it doesn't meet, it doesn't meet D E M requirements. That's on you, not on me. That's why I look at.
This is, did you hear Mr. Vadnez's concerns?
I did, and that that concern was actually discussed at length. Uh I believe you guys were provided uh draft minutes of our meeting. Um that that was discussed at length. Um one of the concerns uh that ended up being raised as we discussed it, though, was that this is much more comprehensive than just this development. Um the development may have been the 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 spark that lit the fuse, but as we kind of examined it more and more, what we were also looking at was really nailing down uh some of the calculations for our own systems right now to make sure that they are actually correct. Um that 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 we're meeting those numbers, and uh at the end of the day, um the future capacity of the system is really the town's concern, not necessarily the developers. I'm sure the developer feels, I don't wanna speak for the developer, but if I was a developer, uh I, as long as my capacity was underneath the uh the limits of the town system, I I really wouldn't care about future development, but since we're talking about future development and our future capacities um and and how this plan looks towards the future development in North Smithfield, uh it was felt that this was really our plan. Not necessarily the developers, even though uh the councilman is correct that uh what kicked this off with the D E M and then and what made us look at this in the first place was the developers' uh needs and 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 their development is really what kind of sparked this uh review.
I agree with Mr. Zoe. This would be valuable information for the town to have, but I kind of look at it as a development. We have a review permit. They pick up the costs when we have our engineers reviewing projects. That's, that's how I'm looking at this thing, you know, when we have other developers to then we have their review done. My outside engineers that represent the town and make sure that the town is not harmed by projects going forward. I look at this as the same, same type of a thing, same type of issue. It's gonna help the town out to have a report, like a report, you know.
But the um, the 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 thing is, so when would we expect, it sounds like to me that this is something that we can get, we can get rolling on now, or we'll wait for the developer to to pay for this. Nothing's even happened over the idiot, so uh I would think that it'd be a big time lag if we uh just stand by and wait for the developer to go.
If we don't get this, we won't, the developers not gonna go forward. D E M's not gonna give a permit. It's that simple. Mr. President?
May I pose, may I pose a question, Mr. Pratt? Yeah.
Tom, can you hear me? Tom Pratt?
Yes.
Hi, Tom. Uh from the draft minutes of the twenty seventh, there was conversation, we've been sent an email, I won't mention the gentleman. Uh did any of those four gentlemen get back to you when the question was posed? Are they going to pay for this?
No, they did not.
They do not. Thank you.
Personally, I'm inclined to root Mr. Dory myself because this is uh, yeah, the impetus was the original development behind Silver Pines, but now it's become a town issue. So even if nothing happened, but if, if nothing happened by, oh, it's Silver Pines or whatever, how many years, we could still benefit from this. So we're gonna do nothing for it now? I don't know, I'm just thinking.
I'm not, I'm not saying nothing.
No, no, I'm not. I understand.
I understand, I understand the reasons for the for the for the review. It makes sense. It's gonna be valuable for the town. My point of it is that it's not our, it's not our issue, though. Right now, we're well within the range of of the flow, two hundred and thirty eight thousand, and I look at that, two hundred and twenty four thousand gallons out of this bill, that's a lot of water. That's a lot of water per day. That means they're gonna be using, that means I'm assuming this is gonna be a municipal water as well. And we don't do, we don't do like Mansack does, or other communities do, like breakfast Mansack, because that's one of the most like. Your amount of water that you use is how much you pay on the sewer use. Like, we have a flat sewer use that you have based on the, on the.
Units?
Units. They use, and uh but Mansack, the the buying of water that you use is, is what determines what you pay in sewer use. Well, what do you use, what you pay in sewer use, because he put more into the system. We have just, we just have, like, think that if you want water, you can flush it five hundred times a day if you want, and you pay the same fee. I just, I just, I just look at this and say, okay, the reason, I'm not saying we don't need the study, the study will be good. Well, I said that, you know. My question is, seventy thousand dollars, it's, it'll be helpful to us, but it's gonna be harmful to them. It's more beneficial to them. They can't do anything without this report. That's why, that's my concern. We're doing something to benefit somebody else. It's not, it's not gonna really benefit us. That's why, I mean, that's my reference in putting it into that peer review that we do on other projects where they they go through the planning board and that process and the zoning board review and this peer review done. And that's, that's why the person submitting the request pays that peer review.
I see, Tom, that's, I just have a question. Uh, Mr. Dory, Mr. Dory, you still with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Uh can you explain what the benefit to the town is if we approve this or not approve this?
So, so the benefit for the town is 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 our, one, our plan hasn't really had a comprehensive look in in a long time. Um two, um what we're proposing is 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 looking at the future use of that area that uses um the uh Belcher app pump station. I I I completely understand uh where the councilman is coming from as far as the major beneficiary of this review is going to be um Slater Village and Silver Pines. Uh but the long-term benefit, the the many. But the long-term benefit, the, the many years into the future benefit is actually the town. Not necessarily just the development. And because of that, uh, after a, a lot of debate, much like you guys are having yourselves right now, the, the commission decided that this is a cost that should be borne by the town. Subject to, of course, uh, uh, y, your approval. We are merely a recommending body. Uh, ultimate decision and authority lies with yourselves. If, if this was not to, if this was to go back to the developer, um, though, one of the things that I'd be concerned about is that, that the plan is done with the comprehensive nature that we've kind of laid out here and not necessarily just what the developer needs. Uh, that, that was one concern is that we want to make, maintain control of what we were getting and not simply ask for a peer review about what affects them and, and the current plan. We want to really do a comprehensive, long-term look at for the town.
All right, next, next question. Coming out of the enterprise fund or our operational fund. Point seven five thousand, point seven thousand five hundred dollars, the fund that proposes to pay for that. In the enterprise fund, sewer, the sewer department, which is an enterprise fund, just as water is an enterprise fund. My, my concern is that, uh, a recap was up to the principal, principal, people that are promoting this development, and we haven't received a response yet. Does that mean they don't, that they don't receive a response and pay for it? Or we have to, it's a search proceeding.
I, I wouldn't be able to table this, uh, until we reach out, until we get back from the, from.
Mr. President, did you want to hear from Tom?
I'm sorry.
Did you want to hear from Tom?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Crabb?
Yeah, no, Mr. President, I think, once he just said he would table it, I think that that's fine. Maybe we should hear from them.
Mrs. Dor, you have any objections to that?
No, sir, I don't.
Table until, uh, we get back from the, uh, the development.
Okay, one motion table. You just get a discussion. Table for the next meeting?
Uh, well, I'm going to give them, uh, till, well, the next meeting, uh, the next council meeting, not, not, not next week.
Regular. Just, I would table it to the next council meeting. If you don't hear, then you can, then you can leave.
Yeah, that's a motion. Do we have a second? Rocco, please.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dor.
You're welcome.
Discussion by council vote on other action around general law forty-two dash forty-six dash five, such as pertaining to collective bargaining, bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to bargaining or litigation. Number one, town of North Smithfield, PM dash two oh two one dash zero two four four three, and number two, potential litigation, high rocks two. At this time, I'll, in motion, and we'll be to a technical session. Rocco?
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Okay, I will, uh, okay. Well, let's take a motion to close, uh, come out of a technical session according to our law forty-two dash forty-six dash five, and to seal the minutes and indicate that no votes were taken. We have a motion, we have a second. No, I'm sorry, hold on, I'm going to back up. We will seal the minutes and indicate one vote was taken. And we have, uh, we have a second discussion. Rocco?
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Mr. Carbo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadnez?
Yes.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes. Now, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
Well, you should indicate, uh, there was an open session, I don't, we're going to take no action, right?
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just skip it over.
That's fine.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.